Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, June 15th, 6:30 PM. We have all members of council present. If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Colbert, since you're not here as often as in the past, would you lead us in the pledge tonight?
I'd be glad to.
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome. And Chief White is making his way up for our invitation. Thank you, Chief, as always.
You're very welcome, Mayor. Thank you, council. If y'all would like to join me in prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we thank you for the many blessings that you bestow on this community. We thank you for all those in attendance this evening and our citizens at large. And, Lord, we pray for good health. We pray for wisdom in our decisions that we make here tonight. We pray for all our public safety officials, our military, of course, and everything they do day out. We pray for all our city employees for the hard work they instill into this community each day. Lord, we pray for our elected leaders and comfort them, keep them safe in everything they do. We lift this up in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. Let's see, our ceremonial items this evening, we have none. Our first action item is the approval of our minutes for May 21, 2015, which was a work session, and our June 1st, 2015, regular session. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve minutes for May 21st, 2015, and June 1st, 2015.
Second. Motion second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's a one correction.
Okay.
I believe, under the first reading of ordinance, ordinance number 1623, it's third, 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph. It said that a motion was made by Deputy Mayor Cindy Drago, seconded by Councilmember Stephen Shank. I think that was Deputy Member Stephen Henkin, who made the second.
Okay. Barbara, can you just... What, 1623?
1623.
Okay. Barbara, can you just re-listen to the tape, confirm that, and I guess bring the minutes back to us at the next meeting? How about the... Are there any changes to the work session meeting minutes?
I didn't see any.
No.
Barbara, would you like us to approve those? All right, who made the motion?
I'll revise my motion to just approve the May 21st work session.
Second. Motion second, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. June 1st will come back to us at July 6th, I guess, Barbara? Okay, July 6th. Next item of business is our public comment portion of the meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where anybody in the audience can come on up and address council on any item not on our agenda or on our agenda. I do have written requests for item 13, so I would save item 13 for that hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address us on anything else other than item 13? Hearing none, I am going to close the public hearing and move on to the first reading of ordinances. First one is ordinance number 1623. It is... Pardon? Oh, consent agenda, sorry. Sorry. Thank you for backing me up. Next item of business is our consent agenda. That is item 4 through 11. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion seconded by Councilman Henking. Councilman Shank, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Henking?
Nope.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Councilwoman?
Good.
Deputy Mayor, excuse me. I have one question on item 7 that could probably be answered rather quickly by Mr. Wyatt, if I may.
Sure.
Bobby, come on up. How are you, sir? Just real quick. Real quick, item 7, Mitchell Hammock Road improvements, long-awaited turn lane improvements at Alephane Mitchell Hammock. My question for you is, reading through it, is this work being done at night?
Not scheduled at night yet. That's something you might consider doing, but it will be during certain hours of the day to avoid the rush hour.
Right, so it won't be done... Since this is on the westbound side, it will be done at a minimum after rush hour?
Actually, this work is on the east side, 434.
Right, westbound Mitchell Hammock.
Sorry, yes. Yeah, they won't be able to do any work until after 10 o'clock.
Okay, so we're just going to avoid the rush hours? That's what I...
Absolutely, yes, sir.
That's what I was trying to get at. I didn't see that inside of there.
That would be bad, yes.
Yes, that would be very bad. The trees that are there in the median, I saw a tree plan. Are some of them being saved, or are they just all going to be replaced?
Pretty much going to be gone.
All right, so we're going to replace them all?
We can save them, we will, but I... Right now, without seeing the final product, I don't know how they're going to be restored.
Okay, but...
If we can, we will.
Let me re-ask the question. If the trees that are currently there aren't saved, new plantings will be put in their place?
Make sure, try and make that happen, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, that didn't answer my question. Let me try to rephrase.
Sorry.
It is... It would be my desire, if it wasn't... If you're not able to save them, that the trees would be replaced.
Yes, sir.
So is that the goal?
Oh, great, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, there we go. That's all I had on that item. Does anybody have anything else on that? Nope, thank you, Bobby.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. All right, a motion on the table is to adopt the consent agenda, item 4 through 11. Any other questions? Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Now we can move on to item number 13, ordinance number 1623, zoning map amendment, Evans Grove, Inc. Let me just turn this over to Mr. Colbert to read by title only, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, Amending the Official Zoning Map to Change the Zoning District of Approximately 11.48 Acres Located on the East Side of South Lake Jessup Avenue, South Side of Clark Street, and North Side of Hillcrest Street from Residential R1 to Planned Unit Development (PUD), Providing for Legislative Findings and Intent, Implementing Actions, Non-Codification, Severability, Conflicts, and an Effective Date."
Thank you, Mr. Colbert. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us, please?
Yes, Mayor. City council first considered this ordinance at its June 1st, 2015 meeting, and thereat continued its first reading to tonight's meeting. The applicant requests planned unit development zoning consistent with the property's low-density residential future land use designation. The proposed zoning is compatible with the surrounding zoning classifications. Land Development Code requires that for PUD zoning that the applicant also submit as part of the request a conceptual development plan and a development agreement. Those... The conceptual development plan and development agreement are provided as exhibits to the ordinance. The applicant's proposal is to a single-family subdivision of 34 units and one foundation use. The foundation use is for... To address the use of the current home on the property. Within the total proposed lots, roughly 50% meet the... Meet or exceed the lot requirements of the existing R1 zoning. The remaining 50% are less than that. It... They... As far as meeting the minimum requirements for R1, but that's part of the planned unit development is that you take a look at the actual design of the property. The city attorney has reviewed the development agreement and for legal content and found it acceptable. The Development Review Committee recommended approval at its Thursday, April 30th, 2015 meeting. Planning Zoning and Appeals Board conducted a public hearing for the proposed zoning map amendment and on May 12th, 2015, and thereat recommended denial. And the PCA's rationale for recommending denial was based on the fact that the proposed lot sizes for the PUD development are not compatible with lot sizes in existing adjacent developments and residential lots. Dr. Correa is available tonight if should you have questions about the conceptual development plan and development agreement. She's here tonight and can walk you through it. It's recommended that the city council schedule a public hearing for July 6th, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I do have some written requests to speak on this item, and we will entertain them. However, I would just like to remind everybody that this is a first reading. This is not the public hearing. So anything that you address to us this evening will have to be readdressed at the public hearing. So just keep that in mind, okay? First one I have here is from Paul Varchulik. Good evening, so you have three minutes.
Very good. All I would address here is the request...
Paul, I'm sorry. I need your name and address for the record.
Very good. My name is Paul Verholic. I'm at 490 Ever Cliff Court here at Oviedo, which is part of the Moss Creek subdivision, which is adjacent to the property in question. All I ask is that you consider pushing this back. I know we had pushed this back, this first reading to the... To the July 6th date. Instead, it was supposed to be tonight, actually, was the original hearing. The reason for doing that would simply be that it's July the 4th weekend, and I'm concerned that some of my neighbors who might be interested in attending this meeting would not be available that day. That's all.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next written request that I have is from Mr. Richard Buckshaw. Sir, just name and address for the record, please.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. Good evening. I'm Richard Buckshaw from 319 West High Street.
Yes, sir.
In Oviedo. I live very nearby the property in question. And I'd like to let you know that my family and I are opposed to the development. This part of Oviedo is very special, a small rural community right downtown. The subject property is very special. Certainly, this historical agricultural era that it represents to the Oviedo heritage. Really, we have the farmer's market right up the street every other Saturday. It's important. I've seen what the developer was proposing, and we believe something better can be done here. We don't need another sub-community, Evans Square. We already a community here that can accept newcomers. I've got some technical stuff that I might not want to bring up right now, but what I'm going to ask of the council is that we keep the character of Oviedo. We have one chance to get this right the first time. We know that change is inevitable. Something better can be done. Something special can be done here. So please choose wisely. Thank you.
You're welcome. You mentioned you had something technical. Did you want to mention it just in case we could have staff address it for you this evening?
Thank you, yes.
Was it technical to our code, maybe?
Potentially. I'm not a real estate expert, or, you know, I've done a little research.
Sure.
And know that the different zones, you know... The property we're talking about is presently in Orange Grove. It's been there forever. I would surmise that at one time it was an agricultural zone. Presently, it's R1, and that we want to change it to a PUD zone. Well, the 2025 plan...
Comp plan.
Comp plan, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Suggests that, well, if you want to do a PUD, you know, 15 acres is recommended on. And we're looking at 11 here. That's okay, possibly, you know, it might be the right thing to do, but I'd like to ask or remind you that when you do a PUD, that offers you the opportunity to have a zero lot line. Actually, I think there's measurements like five feet or whatever. So what I was envisioning, you know, in this proposed development is as many houses as we can pack in there, you know, certainly increasing profit for people involved. I don't think that's what we want there. Further, the developer, he's put together a beautiful package, and I saw it in the minutes here for this evening's agenda. I'd really like you to consider what might be on page 314 of that. There's a nice aerial map that's like Google Earth or some shows surrounding properties, all the beautiful green space that's there. And then on the PDF, page 311, it's titled "More Examples of TND and New Urbanism." Now, the lower left-hand picture shows what it might look like from the aerial view, and it just doesn't match. It doesn't match what our community is now. And I don't think it matches what we would like that to be in the future. So I present that information for your...
We'll get the PUD question answered by Dr. Correa after we do public comments.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Please choose wisely.
Certainly. Thank you very much. Next written request I have is from Frances Cruz. Good evening, Mrs. Cruz. Just name and address for the record, please.
Frances Cruz, 145 Hillcrest Street, Oviedo.
Thank you.
I've been in my home since 1988. First of all, with due respect to the council and to the Evans family, I'm not against development. I'm not necessarily against a PUD. What I'm against is the density and the problems that might incur, such as parking, drainage. The streets that we have, the traffic on them, they're substandard as it is. Tonight, coming here to this meeting on my street, Hillcrest, two cars passed me, and I had to go over into a ruddy area. They just cannot handle the proposed amount of traffic that this development will bring. And I would also like to bring to your attention, it was kind of ironic, the day that I received in the mail the notice of this meeting, I also received this in my water bill, annual drinking water quality report. And on the back, it says, "Keeping your water safe from..." No, that's the wrong one. Sorry. "Letting the real risk." In the past five years, all 50 states have experienced flooding. A flood can be devastating, and you don't have to live near water to be at risk. Factors such as changing weather patterns, land development, and damage to drainage infrastructure. And I think that was kind of apropos to what we're addressing here tonight. Also, I went online to look for something on the pros and cons of a PUD. And in this article, one of the things that was brought up was the public's positive or negative perception of a PUD. And it said, "When a PUD is proposed, the public will need to be brought in early in the project so that they have time to clearly understand the project and have concerns addressed prior to the final public hearing. Misunderstandings could result in costly delays and even rejection of the project. I don't feel that our neighbors have been given the proper timing." And also, it says that "concerns arise when the project receives a public subsidy or results in additional long-term costs for the municipality." I hope that isn't the case. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next written request I have is from LeHua Cox. Did I get that right? Was I at least close?
LeHua Cox.
All righty. I'm percent Pierre, everybody messes that up too, so...
Yeah, I'm Chinese. I have little bit of English problem. Everybody be patient with me.
Of course, just your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is LeHua Cox. We live at 280 Hillcrest Drive, on the corner of the Hillcrest with South Lake Jessup, just across with Orange Grove on the corner. I think we are the one of three family directly affected next to the Orange Grove. We moved here 2008, and we love this area. We cannot afford it buy the house. And fortunately for us, four years ago, and the prior owner feel the English couple, they cannot keep this house. They have to go back, go back to England. So we bought this house with a reasonable amount of money. We can afford it. And we... Our dream come to true. And finally, we got the place. We love it, and we got the house, we can afford it. After that, we took lot of mortgage. We ran away the house because house was a horrible condition. It's not livable condition. All the insulation, drywall is not there. So we took out almost $200,000 loan. Make this house livable right now. But now you're going to put this PUD in this location direct from our house. Our hard-earning entire life, our retirement, everything is in this house, and it's going to through to the water. Think about what kind of house can sell, 600K, 700K. That's what I heard from people say. But who is going to willing to pay 600K to 700K for the house you neighbor five feet away from you? I don't believe that. As soon as the council, you prove this plan, they will change. Oviedo Park is a example. First, everybody live in Oviedo. Plan was perfect. I sawed it. Have the pond, have the fountain, have the park. Also have the restaurant shop. Another side is apartment. But now see what's happened. After city proved the plan and developer changed the plan, now all the apartment pop out, all the traffic everywhere.
The plan on Oviedo on the park really hasn't changed. But that's... We could talk about that another time.
My point is, developer, if you proved it, we don't know our future. If they're truly put the house, every house between each other is five feet away. Our house value will reduce dramatically. Our hard-earning money all washed to the water. I took out my retirement and put in the house. After I received the first letter, and actually, I didn't receive at the first hearing because we were in Kansas for my nephew graduation. We weren't there. When we came back, we missed that meeting. I almost passed out. That's all my earning is in the house. Please, thinking about a regular working-class citizen. You are our council, you are our mayor. Please, thinking about your citizen. Put our best interest, please. I beg you.
Okay.
And I don't know what I say. Oviedo City, I think Building Department have the rules for the R1 requirement have to be 8,500 square foot lot with 80 feet cross. I don't think those plan fit into that requirement. And also, look at the surrounding area. All the house between two houses, no, any house you can find it is between five, even 10 feet away. We don't have those kind of house in our community. And our community is everyone love it. Like I said, move to Florida, this is the only place I feel in love.
Mayor, we just need to wrap it up, though.
I just want beg you, please, put our resident best interest. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of the written requests. Is there anybody else who would like to address council? As mentioned earlier, we do need to readdress at the public hearing. Come on. Just name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Josh Kovak, 421 Hillcrest Drive. Just wanted to echo the request that we delay beyond this July 7th. I'm personally out of town. I'm neighbors with LeHua. I bought the house where I live. I think the Bellhorns used to own it, famous baseball player. I moved from something that was probably a PUD in 2009, high-density. Found this place, fell in love, bought it, and I just would hate to see it go the way of 30-plus houses on an acre or so. That's all. I'd like the chance to talk July 7th, the postponed version of July 7th.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else who would like to address council? I'll get to the applicant in a second. Anybody else from the public? If not, we'll let the applicant answer some of the questions she's heard this evening, and then I'll go to our staff and get some of the other questions answered. All right, is seeing none?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Ellen Avery Smith, Rogers Towers, 201 South Orange Avenue. With me today are Mr. Evans, the owner of the subject property that you're considering now, and Mr. Axel, who is the Project Development Director and leader for the project, and also the applicant, Mark Stelly, who is the project engineer from Pullos and Bennett. We are not prepared to give a presentation since tonight is the first reading. We will give our full presentation on July 6th. And because of the delay we incurred, being postponed from July 1st to today, we would very much like to have our second hearing on July 6th, if it's all right with you Commissioners. We respect the fact that people will be out of town, but we do not feel like another delay is appropriate at this time. We also agree with the staff recommendation of approval and consistency and compatibility with the comprehensive plan in the Land Development Code. So I'll answer any questions you might have, and I've got our team here to answer anything that I can answer.
Anybody have any questions?
Not tonight.
I have one. R1 zoning, how many lots?
According to the Land Development Code, at 3.5 units per acre would be 40 lots.
All right, let me re-ask the question. If you were developing a subdivision, R1, how many lots would it be?
I am not an engineer, so I'm going to ask our project engineer to come up and answer that question.
Great, thank you. We had the question answered for us at the continued public hearing, so...
Correct. Good evening, Mark Stelly, Pullos and Bennett. We have not defined the project of that nature. We have laid out various conceptual...
Yeah, what... In concept, what is it?
We were on 27 units, and that was sticking with the current layout that we currently have. You could probably adjust that and try to achieve, depending upon what the goal of the developer would be.
Could you repeat that into the microphone? I'm not sure everybody was able to hear.
I'm sorry.
How many lots is it?
We did various layouts on the project, conceptual layouts. The one that we did with the 80-foot-wide lots, keeping the same configuration, street configuration, park area, was 27. But I will say that you don't necessarily have to keep the park area that we had on there. We were providing more park than was required. We were still doing alley-loaded for three of the lots. So, I mean, that's just one particular layout. There could be other options that we could investigate.
All right, so the diff... What you're saying is the difference in a conceptual R1 plan is seven lots?
Thereabouts.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions? Councilman Shank?
Not tonight.
What would that do roadway, like you said, the park? That was concerning, keeping the park similar-sized, or... And how much roadway internally, then?
I mean, that was keeping the exact same layout that we have now. So we just took the layout that we had, and we just went from 65 to 80-foot lots. If you were going to try to make this a conventional subdivision, I don't think I would stick with that particular layout. I think I would go with a different layout to maximize the lot yield on it. And I can't say we're standing here right now what that would be.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had? Anything else? No? Dr. Correa.
How are you? Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Correa. I know you addressed this at the first attempt of the first reading, but could you explain the PUD process? What a PUD is? The benefits or the concerns with the PUD, and how it's applicable here?
Sure. I also need to clarify, PUD is a future land use designation and PUD is a zoning district designation. Because the requirement for 15 acres is for PUD as a future land use designation. So when we change the comprehensive plan, to do an amendment to the comprehensive plan and change the future land use map, that's not what is being requested. Here, they are requesting a PUD as a zoning district. So the future land is still low-density residential, and they are requesting just a zoning map amendment to convert R1 to PUD. PUD is one of the zoning compatible with the R1, so we can request R1. And usually, we have PUDs when you have either creative design or you have a... And usually we have PUDs when you have either creative design or you have a mixed use development, which is the case. They are proposing 35, 34 single family residences and one lot that will have the foundation use. We changed the motel use. We heard the concern and we changed it to be a foundation use, which has always been the intent of the property. And because of that, the PUD is would be applicable.
All right, so just so everybody heard that, the motel use was that was last time you told us that was for traffic counting or something?
We just use that for traffic, but we heard.
The actual use in the PUD now is what?
Foundation use and we define it in the development agreement.
That would be used as a seminary and retreat or whatever we discussed the last meeting.
Very similar to a single family house, but it will have, you know, up to seven gases and they will have probably also events and that's all described in the development agreement. So it's not a commercial activity and definitely not a motel.
Right, and the foundation is RTS, the seminary right here in Oviedo.
Yes, something like that, yeah.
Right, so it's the visiting seminarians, priest, whatever we heard at the last hearing, as far as we know.
Yes.
That will run with the land, correct?
Sorry?
That will also then run with the land. So to change that use, because I know there were some concerns about the use change, name it whatever you want now and then later on there be some use change.
Well, the development agreement allows that property to be a foundation use or a single family use. So they can have it converted to only single family use as it is right now. So that is, there is this possibility of, you know, either foundation use or single family use.
And then clarify for me in the PUD, and I should have asked Ms. Avery when she was up here, but it's 34 lots, but only 32 homes.
Well, what they are proposing is 34 residences, but they are keeping two homes for a period of time to be used as additional to the foundation use, as overflow traffic or parking if they have, you know, events there or if they have. So they are planning not to build them in a period of time and I.
I'll get them to clarify for us.
You know, the limit, I think it's five years or something like that, but they are planning to build 32 right now or as whenever it's approved.
32 as opposed to the 27 in R1, correct? Five difference with the PUD.
So we don't have requirements as to the acreage because that's a question that some several people have asked me for the PUD as a zoning. We have small zonings, PUDs in our zoning map, built more, every town home community in Oviedo is a PUD. So the small PUDs would be the built more. We have Oviedo way north.
We have the one down here at Chapman and 434.
We have, yes, and we have Dr. Edwards Way 2 that we recently approved.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
I do.
Dr. Carrera?
The home that is sitting there now that they are gifting to the foundation and they are using it to house guests there, it's not a money exchange thing, correct? Like you would a hotel, they people aren't paying to stay there.
No, I think they're invited.
They're invited. What, you know, when we originally talked, it was going to be, you labeled it a motel and that raised some concern. And then you said you changed it to a, what was the term you use now?
Foundation.
Foundation. Is there any way that in the future, let's say five, 10, 20 years from now, that they can't change that house and make it a hotel, some type of motel that can people can come in and pay to stay there?
They would have to change the development agreement and will have to go through the boards.
So it's not an easy thing to do, correct?
This is all defined in the development agreements. That's why we have a development.
Is that a benefit for that to be with the PUD? Does that help protect that not to take it and make it some commercial use?
Well, it's, I think it's the intent. It's what we want.
It runs with the land.
And it runs with the land.
Runs with the land so they have to come through this process.
You would have to.
Or very similar, public comments and come to counsel to change the agreement. Development agreement would have to be changed and that would mean coming back through counsel and all the steps involved in public forum, et cetera, to make that. And that's what I, when I said run with the land, it is part of the land itself at that point and runs for whoever owns it forever.
I don't think I have any more questions tonight.
Theresa, I just had, Mayor. I just had a couple of questions. With the PUD concept and just looking at this, and just clarify me this because I'm unclear, no cars would be coming out on Hillcrest under the PUD, correct? The driveways are all facing inwards and there would be no access to the eastern side of Hillcrest, correct?
Yeah, and that's one of the creative, you know, aspects of the design of this project, which is based on new urbanism, you know, and now traditional design. The idea is to have, although they have smaller lots and narrower lots, the impact on the surrounding development is less than a conventional suburban development where you have a direct access, you know, driveways accessing the streets. But with this project, we don't have driveways accessing the main streets. They all come from alleys. They are rear loaded. There are five lots that have, that are front loaded internal to the subdivision, but the garages are in the back. So you don't have the garages as a prominent element in the facades. They are hidden. That's the whole idea.
But actually, but I'm just saying, there would be no access from these homes onto the eastern side of Hillcrest, correct?
No driveways.
Right.
Facing Hillcrest, Lake Jessup or Clark.
Right.
If they are converted to a conventional R1.
Then they could cut and come out on the R1.
They would be allowed to.
And go out on all of those roads. Right now, they're just coming out on Lake Jessup, correct? And Clark.
We have two access.
And Clark, Clark and Lake Jessup.
If you want to see the.
Attachment 3, I think.
Give me the power.
There it is.
Yeah.
Get that one up on Clark, right?
You have access points, right? Streets accessing Lake Jessup and Clark and you have an alley exiting at Lake Jessup. But the lots facing Hillcrest and the lots facing Lake Jessup and Clark don't have driveways directly, you know, into the street.
But there's no access though on Hillcrest? That's what I'm trying to get.
No, no.
One of the things that the PDA had an issue with was that that part of Hillcrest was not developed, it needed to be upgraded, but no cars are going to come out of this under a PUD are going to come out onto Hillcrest. They're going to use Clark and Lake Jessup.
And the alley, yes, no.
That's what I was getting at. Got you.
Any other questions for Dr. Carrera? Now, Dr. Carrera, your PhD is in planning and architecture, correct?
Yes, it's in planning.
Could you explain to me, because staff is recommending approval on this? Can you tell the council and tell the public why you feel this plan is more beneficial than straight R1 zoning?
Well, first of all, we think it is a good combination of uses to allow the historic home to be there, right? So the mixed use is what is allowing the foundation use and the mixed use needs to be approved through a PUD. This is an infill project, so it's surrounded by development and I think the product, the design that they created is respecting the neighborhood. The idea of the new urbanism and the new traditional design as opposed to conventional suburban design is that you would have the houses more connected to the streets. So it's more valuing the pedestrians as opposed to cars. So it's, which is something I think it's a good combination to the historic home. You have a new, we have pictures here, so we can go on with that with the slide. The houses are closer to the streets, so the sackbags, they're placed closer to the street and that's why you have a reduced sackbag, but you don't have cars. So and usually they have, with this design, the houses would have front porches. So they create like a semi-public area, so it's something that is also.
Lynda, can you scroll through that because I think there's a slide on that called Evan's Square Concept? There it is.
Yeah, this is, this is the concept that the developer, you know, provided to us and but this is the idea and there are also other pictures. So this is the idea of the homes, that homes have, that you don't have garages, you know, at the facades. They are hidden, you know. So it's pedestrian friendly. That's something that we would like to stimulate to have in Oviedo.
And Lynda, if you keep going, I just noticed there's three or four other slides of elevations.
These are all conceptual elevations that were provided by the developer.
Thank you, Lynda.
And we have in the beginning for that, we have also other communities, you know, that were built. And so this one is in Baldwin Park. You have the same concept. These are narrower lots, so these are smaller homes, but you have a common area. The other, one of the other principles of this design, you would have an emphasis on the common areas. So you would have like a central area, you have like a park and that is to stimulate community interaction. And so this is also an infill project, Baldwin Park. These are just pictures from the internet showing, you know, what it would look like with a new urbanism community. So the project is based on this concept and they also propose ancillary uses to have a modern lawsuit suite, which is something that is also to promote different generations living, you know, together. And they are proposing a common parking space. The development agreement talks about nine parking spaces. The project chose 12 and the developer, last time he was here, he talked about upgrading to 18. So that, you know, to also accommodate one of the concerns of not having parking spaces for gases in the neighborhood. And the difference between what they are proposing and R1, we have also a table here showing that 50% of the lots that they are proposing are above the minimum requirement of R1 and 50% is below. The lowest or the lot size, it's 7,547, would relate to a 12% deviation for 8,500 lot size. So that is what, how much they are deviating. And this is just a small percentage of the lots.
Dr. Carrera, can I ask you a question? The PUD, can you still have a PUD and have bigger lot sizes? Can they still bring the other lots up to 8,500 square feet and still have a PUD?
Yeah, they would not need a PUD to have 8,500 because R1 is, they are already entitled to R1. So R1 would be the 8,500.
And I noticed a lot of those pictures of the houses, how far setback are they asking for from the street? Because there are no houses in that area that are up to the sidewalk like that. There is quite a setback for all the homes in that area, so I guess I'm having a hard time.
It's a different design concept. That's what it is. And I think the whole discussion, discussion is about design. It's not about density because they comply with the density as proposed by the complaint. It's really about the design concept and the design is more compact. They have more common areas, but the design is more compact. The trade-off is that you don't have the garages in front, you have alleys for, you know, for the cars. So there is, it's a different concept. That's what it is.
I'm sorry, I had said this, Wade Trim 15 years ago, 14 years ago, Wade Trim, when they talked about, we talked at large about the whole area and redevelopment of the historic downtown, building over in Oviedo Park, all this stuff, they brought this concept for. They said, this is what you want to look at. It maximizes the open space because it pushes the open space together. Instead of having a front yard, all it maximizes and makes a bigger park area, it starts minimizing the actual roadway because internally it makes less road surface because you have less roadway. So you get benefits of that. From what I remember, you know, I said, this was 15 years ago, they said, this is what you really should be looking for, especially for these infill projects, that you want it to be and have maximize and have a great looking park area. Otherwise, you end up with R1, the size of the park is totla. I mean, that would be the requirement on this size property. The requirement for a park would be this big, you know, would be a very small one, right? I mean, it'd be essentially a totla that is in a lot of other subdivisions, you have .28.
As opposed to.
Yeah, as opposed to an acre, a quarter acre, as opposed to an acre that they're putting. So it, you know, R1, the straight zoning, and that's what this whole design concept, I said, that was 15 years ago and they brought this, that we started seeing this. And they said, this is what you should start looking at when these projects start coming forward because they're gonna. I mean, it's an eventuality that infill projects, whether it's land that's orange groves or land that's homes that people say, I'm gonna, I've got a big home with a lot of acreage and I'm gonna take the home down and or split up, things like that. This is a place of a design concept, but those are some of the positives are that they maximize the open space, push it together. Instead of having little pockets of open space here and there, and again, reduce the road surface area. And again, they're, they also, you can have them set back or forward, but they also, you know, talked about bringing the houses forward to have walking and visibility.
Mr. Mayor, are we going to have, are we having a discussion on this tonight? Are we going to wait? Because I have a lot more I can say, but I will wait until the next meeting to have the full discussion.
My purpose for bringing Dr. Carrera was just to address some of the concerns that the audience had had because I'd been noticing from the emails that there are some misconceptions, not that they're not legitimate concerns. So that was my only intention. I was going to have Mr. Wyatt just address the drainage issue that was brought up and then I figured we'd really get into it at the public hearing.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make one comment while I have Theresa up there? Because I, you know, I read all the emails and folks, if you're out there and you send us all the emails, thank you. It's always nice to hear what you're all thinking, but it seemed to me from, from the emails that I received, everybody was concerned with the R1 and the lot size, you know, and just glancing over this and Lynda, it's one of, it's one of those scrolls in here, but you know, the 8,500 square foot in R1, you know, you have 17 lots in this thing that I'm looking at under what the developer wants to do that are 85 and above. I mean, you have 10 of them that are almost between 9,000 and 10,000. And then, let's see, 17, yeah, like 17 of them are above R1. And then the ones that are below are very close. They're like 8,499, 8,084. So 19 of 32 lots are right there under there. And I just want everybody to understand because that, the R1 is what I got in all my emails, but you know, 19 of them are very close to that and a lot of them are above that, correct?
Yes.
And just for, you know, people here, PUD, R1, sometimes you get confused. I mean, the PUD folks really, it just gives people, you know, it's not a bad word, but it just gives a developer where he doesn't have to, you know, fit into a shoe. Gives him the ability to negotiate what he wants to do. And sometimes if you don't like an R1 or you don't like something that's coming in, the PUD just allows you to make changes. It's negotiated zoning, I mean, for lack of a better word, because some people really don't understand what it is. You know, but 19 of those homes are R1 and some even much more than that, you know, from what I've read.
Dr. Carrera, are 50% of the lots less than the 8,500 square feet?
Yes, that's what it shows there.
Okay.
Well, 19 of 32 lots are R1 and above.
They have.
According to what we have in front of us.
Thirty, 50%, 17 is above and 50% is below.
Well, I'm using the 32.
Well, I'm using the 32, because you said two of those lots may not even get developed for five, 10 years.
Well, but they may.
They may. But for right now, what would be there for the conceivable future, 19 of 32 are above R1, according to what staff is showing us here.
Well, we can hash that one out at the next meeting. Any other questions for Dr. Carrera? Thank you. Mr. Wyatt.
Mr. Wyatt, the question was asked about drainage, and that's always a concern with the developments that we have, especially when they're adjacent to other homes. Can you explain to everybody the regulations as they are today, as opposed to 20 years ago, in concerns of water on a new project?
Well, I can't speak to 20 years ago, but I can tell you, based on the site and my observations, they are required to retain all the water on site. Natural grades head to the north and northeast, away from Hillcrest, away from Jessup. What I've seen from the preliminary design, everything is contained on site and moves in the way it's supposed to. Well, I haven't seen anything yet that provides me any alarm as far as affecting any surrounding homes as far as drainage.
And what happens if, after this is built, within the two-year period, they do affect other homes?
We go back to them for maintenance.
And by maintenance, explain to the folks what that is.
Make them remediate the issue.
Fix it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Wyatt?
No, sir.
Nope. Thank you, Bobby. The applicant want to add anything before we move on? Okay. With the pleasure of counsel. Need a motion, scheduled public hearing.
Need a motion, scheduled public hearing on July... Sorry. Anybody else want to... We want to schedule a public hearing on July 6th, City Council...
Want me to do it?
Yeah, please. You always do.
All righty. Entertain a motion to schedule the public hearing for July 6th, 2015, on ordinance number 1623, here in the Oviedo City Council chambers, at Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM.
Oh, moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep?
I do have one thing. I would just, I would just say, there was a couple folks that came up that, that may not be around on the public hearing. I would just say, if this passes, that developer, get with these folks and address their concerns. If they missed you, if they can't make the public hearing, certainly, they all need to be heard. We gotta make sure we hear everybody and whatever their concerns. I know you've done it once before. There was a meeting, I'm aware of, but this fellow who came up, please get with the developer and get his phone number and get with him before, before that time, so you get everything addressed. That's all I would say.
Mr. Mayor, before we go any further, I'd just like to say that I have met with the owner of the property, the developer, and Mr. Axel several times over the past year on this project. Monday night, we had a meeting, and, which Mr. Axel and Mr. German facilitated. A lot of, I see a lot of the faces that were there that night, they were here, and they discussed it. I was here, I sat, and I listened, and I took notes of what everybody said. I did not give my opinion that evening. I did say, however, that the hearing would be July 6th, and I know that's not good for some of you, but we did put it off two weeks anyway. So I just wanted to let you all know that I was at that meeting, and have gotten several emails. I think I've answered all of them. I prob, I don't know about the most recent ones, I might not have answered. And telephone calls, and talking to a lot of the neighbors when I'm out walking.
Deputy Mayor, just one second, Mr. Colbert wants to add something.
I just want to say, for the public's benefit, Mayor, that if anybody can't be here on the 6th, they could certainly submit a written statement that could become a part of the public record on that evening.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Colbert. Ms. Smith, may I ask you a question, please? Avery, I understand that everybody would like to get this done on July 6th, but can we do July 20th? Could you go come forward to your clients and get back to me? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, because we've, the project has already been delayed to this hearing today, we would prefer to go on July 6th, and that residents who cannot attend that day, do as Mr. Colbert recommended, and provide their comments in writing to the board. We can also talk to people after this meeting, and between now and July 6th, about their concerns.
So you would be willing to meet individually with the two people who spoke this evening, who cannot be here on July 6th?
Yes, sir.
All righty. So after the meeting out in the hallway, they should just come see you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion on the table for the public hearing to be July 6th. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Why don't we take a five-minute recess? We'll let everybody clear. Those who cannot be in attendance, please see Mrs. Avery, and she will get some information from you, so they can sit with you individually. Five-minute recess. All righty, let's call this back to order. Let's just see if the clerk is ready.
Yes.
Are they ready upstairs?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boo.
14.
All righty, moving right along, we're up to item number 14, which is ordinance number 1624. And this is a local administrative amendments to the Florida Building Code. Mr. Colbert, can you read this by title only for us, please?
Yes, sir. This ordinance is entitled an ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, repealing section 1420 of the City Code of Ordinances Regarding Building Codes, replacing said sections with the current provisions of the Florida Building Code as amended herein. Adopting certain administrative amendments to Chapter 1 of the Florida Building Code, 5th Edition, 2014, providing for a savings provision, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementing administrative actions and fees, providing for enforcement and penalties... for enforcement and penalties, providing for conflicts, providing for codification and correction of Scrivener's errors, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Colbert. Mr. Cobb, can you please enlighten us?
Thank you, Mayor. Florida statutes requires the Florida Building Commission to update the Florida Building Code every three years. The last update was the two thousand and ten Florida Building Code, and when it was adopted, the city also adopted what we call the administrative amendments, and that is section fourteen dash twenty of the city's Code of Ordinances. What the statutes allow us to do is to adopt our own administrative amendments that are unique to our city, and those are done each time we, the commission updates the building code, we in turn update our administrative amendments. So this ordinance, the current building code will expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, and the new building code, the two thousand and fourteen edition, will become effective on July first, two thousand and fifteen. So what this ordinance does, it repeals the current administrative amendments with section fourteen twenty and replaces it with the new updated administrative amendments to reflect the two thousand and fourteen building code. We're asking tonight the city council to schedule a public hearing for July sixth, two thousand and fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Quick question, if they're expiring on July first and we're not second reading this to July sixth, what happens those five days?
We should be okay.
Okay.
We should be okay.
Slide the float. Yeah, we'll go with that. Well, let's see, I don't have any requests to speak on this one, so I'd like to schedule the public hearing for ordinance number sixteen twenty-four for July sixth, two thousand and fifteen, here at Oviedo City Hall, Oviedo City Council Chambers, four hundred Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, three two seven six five, at approximately six thirty P. M. Motion second, any discussion? Anybody really want to know what's going to happen during those five days? Because I'd like to, but, yeah, I'll trust Mr. Cobb on that one.
He's gone on vacation.
There you go. Councilman Britton, anything?
Nope.
All righty. Hearing nothing, I'll call the vote, schedule a public hearing for the sixth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we're up to the city manager's report. Oh, no, we're not. I'm sorry. Item number fifteen, resolution thirty thirteen dash fifteen, Oviedo Point Pre-Annexation Agreement. Mr. Cobb, I believe I'm going to turn this one over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for city council to approve a pre-annexation agreement with Oviedo Point Investors LLC. The agreement affects incorporated parcels, which are known as, in the agreement, as the Wawa and the Babalene properties totaling approximately two point six nine acres, and unincorporated parcels totaling approximately seventeen point six two acres, which are located immediately east to the incorporated parcels on the south side of Mitchell Hammock Road, east of State Route four twenty-six. A pre-annexation is a contract between an incorporating municipality and the owner of the property being annexed. It's a formal agreement to resolve issues involving utilities, services, zoning, density, and other issues in concept prior to the annexation occurring through the enactment of an ordinance. The city does not have land use jurisdiction to approve any amendments to its comprehensive plan or any amendments to its zoning map until the property has actually been annexed. On October first, two thousand and seven, the city council adopted resolution number sixteen nineteen dash zero seven. In that resolution, the city council stated that we would not allow, we would not do any more annexation agreements where the developer developed in the county and then came into the city. However, the city council did leave the door open that should we had opportunities for economic development, that we could bring forward proposals to, to the council to consider for, in a pre-annexation agreement. This pre-annexation agreement is, is one of those proposals. It provides for the owner to obtain site plan approval of the unincorporated property through Seminole County for the entire site. The city agrees to accept Seminole County's approval of the site plan. The entire unincorporated property will be annexed into the city, with the exception of a small parcel that will remain in the county, and that's already been taken care of. The annexation will occur within two years of the execution of the pre-annexation agreement or within thirty days after certificates of occupancy have been issued by Seminole County for buildings A and B, and that is shown on exhibit E of the agreement. If I remember correctly, the agreement, I believe, has, there's about five buildings that are planned on the property, and so the remaining buildings would be developed in the city. The city's approval, the agreement provides for the city's approval in concept of the architectural design for buildings A and B, which are also provided in exhibit G of the agreement. The city also agrees that the architectural design standards and other land development codes, regulations in the city's land development code, as of the date of the execution of the pre-annexation agreement, shall apply to the design and construction of the commercial buildings on the unincorporated property and the incorporated parcel for a time period not to exceed two years after the execution date. The city also agrees to allow a maximum of two freestanding signs on the unincorporated property, and the, the signs will comply with the city's shopping center sign regulations. Primarily what we've been looking at is based on the square footage, each sign would be a maximum of seventy square feet, maximum height of twelve feet. The landscaping and base and all those other things would also apply. No offsite signs would also be allowed on the unincorporated property. The city's approval, the agreement provides for the city's approval in concept of the owner's construction of two right turn lanes on the eastbound side of Mitchell Hammock Road. There are two entrances proposed for the unincorporated property, and there would be a right turn lane proposed on each one of those. The agreement also provides that the owner shall, shall have a traffic study of the Mitchell Hammock Road, Red Bug Lake Road corridor from State Route four thirty-four to State Route four seventeen, to be accomplished at the expense of the owner, which shall, which reports shall provide to the city and before the annexation of the unincorporated property. And the study will look at, also will include the, whether or not a signalization will be necessary at the full access that is planned on the east side of the property. There's also, the agreement also provides for a left turn lane to be developed for the eastern access into the property as well. The owner agrees to, to provide for a B buffer along the, along the Mitchell Hammock Road corridor, as well as the other buffer yards within the property to comply with the city's landscaping regulations. And finally, the owner agrees to connect to the city utilities as far as water, sewer, and reuse. On the incorporated properties, which are to the west, the city agrees to approve buffer yard with deviations associated with the Wawa parcel and associated with, in association with the eminent domain actions along State Route four twenty-six and Mitchell Hammock Road. In other words, we have a special section in our land development code that deals with properties that have been affected by prior eminent domain actions, and it allows a special process for development approvals on those properties. And what it says, what this is saying is that we will execute that special section of the code. They are also going to do a lot split of the property, which may have already, and the result of that lot split will result in the Babalene property receiving a sign, one sign, and then the Wawa parcel will have the double frontage. It'll have frontage on four twenty-six as well as frontage on Mitchell Hammock Road. So it will be allowed to have two signs, which is consistent with the city's land development code. And then lastly, the owner agrees to construct an entrance feature on the Wawa property that's basically like a welcome to Oviedo type structure. The city attorney participated in the development of this pre-annexation agreement, has no legal objections. The staff recommends adoption of resolution number three thousand thirteen dash fifteen, and it's recommended that city council adopt resolution number three thousand thirteen dash fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. The applicant wants to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. My name is Ryan Stahl with Equinox Development, six thirty, South Maitland Avenue, Maitland, Florida. I'd like to, I really can't add much more than to what Mr. Cobb presented. We actually were a commercial developer base here in central Florida. We actually stood before you a couple of years ago with the Ale House development down the street, so it's, we're familiar with the city process. City of, the members, the residents of city of Oviedo have been very, very supportive of that particular development. And as we continue to look forward for other opportunities, one thing that's always struck us in continuing to keep relationship with Ale House, I always talk about not only the local, the local support they get from residents, but also the restaurant sales quite honestly do very, very well for that Ale House. And as we talk to other restaurants, they kind of see a need for it. So we've always kept our eye on various development opportunities within the city of Oviedo. We actually, we are fortunate enough to have a longstanding relationship with Wawa. We opened the first Wawa down by Sea World, that was almost three years ago now. They continue to do a great expansion, now they're actually heading down to South Florida as well. A great company, and this will be our twelfth Wawa that we've done. The people with Wawa, in fact, we just opened one two days ago up in Port Orange. They reach out to the community, they give back quite a bit, and they have looked at Oviedo as kind of being like-minded as far as reaching out to the community. They're really specific on trying to find the best location. As you guys know, there's one south in Alefaya, there's one by University of Central Florida, and so they do various studies, and this site that we looked at, the abandoned gas station I refer to it as, initially, we drove by it many, many times and it just never even crossed our mind. And then we end up starting to basically take an area and we started sketching it out, and next thing you know, with an assemblage, a Wawa fit. That led to three parcels being assembled, not the easiest development, but nonetheless, it all came together. And as this particular, the development grew on it, we, we realized that there was a lot of moving parts to it. The first part is we were overcoming various physical conditions with the existing gas station site. There's a creek that runs behind it at an angle, easements all over, and then just the, the ice where what's there right now. It, it needs to kind of be redone, and so in our initial discussions, as Mr. Cobb said, it was, a lot of discussions were put together and really trying to look at this as a whole package, not just as a Wawa as a whole. And as we started going through that, a lot of the offsites came into play as far as access with the existing conditions of the curb, median that's already constructed, flow of traffic, what works well for Wawa. And then we started looking at this adjoining piece of property to the east of it, the seventeen acre piece of property, and started realizing opportunities for that. As we reached out to a number of retailers, we realized the interest was there, and so we started piecing together the site plan, and it's really come together. And what we wanted to do before we kind of go forward with that portion, we want to make sure that all the pieces come together. Always been fully dedicated to this one. In fact, they're ready to submit after this evening, they just want to make sure everything's lined up, and in fact, we met with them just the other day on this property, so they're really gung ho on opening this thing up next year. But with that, not only the design changes too, as the knee wall, it got incorporated, and we decided to go ahead and incorporate the welcome to Oviedo monument feature in the front, there's also other considerations that were made on behalf of Wawa, some design criteria that were actually added to their property, which they have not done, so those, and Wawa is very, very strict on making any modifications, and any retailer coming into a new market, Wawa being one of them, they want to make sure that their identity is similar across every single store. So those modifications are actually specific to the city of Oviedo, so, and those were made by a number of suggestions in this room. The other thing too is, the document, as it came together, we realized it was far more difficult than I think any of us imagined. I think it's thirty-eight pages now, and, and that alone, I think probably the majority of people in this room actually put their hand on that document at some point or another. But it is one that I think, not only does it support well for the city, it supports well for us, it supports well for Wawa, I think it's going to support well for the residents of the city of Oviedo. And before I wrap up, I just want to thank not only city manager, the city attorney, but also city staff. This has been quite a Herculean effort to get this document together that works well and for everybody, so I do want to make mention of that. And here we have our team, if there's any other questions.
Ryan, any restaurant signed yet that you can disclose, or not yet?
Not yet.
I'd rather you not say anybody than promise us things that don't get delivered. Any other questions from Mr. Stahl?
No.
Mayor, if I could, I forgot to mention something. While during the break, Mr. Evans approached me and asked about one of the sections in the, in the agreement that we need, he asked if we could do a clarification on, and it's on page five, and I would rather Mr. Stahl explain it to you, but I think it, basically the request is, there's a section on page five, it's number eight, and it deals with the buffer yards.
Is it in the resolution, or is it in the?
It's in the agreement itself. It's on page five of the agreement.
Hang on, let me, let's get it open.
Page five, number eight.
Number what?
Number eight.
It's number eight, it's, you'll see the eight there, and it talks about the buffer yards and about the B buffer, and one of the things that Mr. Evans asked about was that if we could clarify that the B buffer would apply only to the Mitchell Hammock Road buffer yard, the buffer yard, the front buffer is what it would be, and, but I wanted to let Mr. Stahl explain the details behind it. Mr. Evans, Mr. Evans asked me about it, and so I thought I would, I wanted to make sure that we covered it beforehand.
The only clarification on that is, and it was, it's been an interesting design exercise to go through because the site itself is being designed under Seminole County standards. However, we decided to incorporate a number of Oviedo standards into the design, even though it'll be permanent underneath Seminole County, because ultimately with us being in the city, we want to look at the city property. In the front though, though, with the right turn lanes that we agreed to do, we're doing two of them, that was done in, talking with Mr. Wyatt, negotiating just from a safety standpoint and getting people off that road, you guys know how busy that road is, and so just to give a safe haven to get off in there, but what that does is, it actually encroaches into the development, thus actually encroaching into the buffer per the city of Oviedo. So we're going back to, on this particular issue, Seminole County standards just for the front, every other buffer within the development will be under city standards. The only clarification. So the, to add to that, I'm going to suggest, and then.
Okay.
Halfway down, number eight, after the word type B landscape buffer yard, we would suggest adding a long Mitchell Hammock Road as, and then delete requirements, and then say as set forth in the city land development code. That would add the clarification and would be consistent with our conversations with everybody to this point.
You'll do the landscape plantings up front to meet the city codes. The landscaping, the plantings will be done to the city code, you're just talking about the width of the buffer?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Cobb, do you agree with? Do you all want to huddle up for a minute?
I know, we're okay. I mean, what, Mr., the way that, the way that the wording reads now is that there would be a type B buffer yard on every perimeter.
On every perimeter, right.
And our current code, along Mitchell Hammock Road, we require a type C buffer, which is a thirty-foot buffer. As Mr. Stahl said, to accommodate these turn lanes, we need to shrink the buffer down, so the type B. Under our standard code, the prop, the east, the south, and the west buffer yards will be ten feet, type A buffers. And so what, by making this clarification that the type B will be on Mitchell Hammock Road, then we'll do the type As.
Oh, all right.
Around the other ones.
I see. Because the way it's written now, technically, we could say it's all the way around?
That, that was when they first approached me tonight, I said, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what's wrong with that?
So.
All right. So you're comfortable with the? I saw Councilman Schenk writing it down, so assuming we'll add it into the motion?
Yes, we need to place it in the motion so that we, we have your direction to revise the agreement before execution.
No problem. All righty. Anything else, Ryan? Anything else from council of Mr. Stahl?
No.
No? All right. I have no request to speak for him, so what is the pleasure of council? Councilman Schenk, why don't you do it, because you were writing everything down?
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to adopt resolution number thirty thirteen dash fifteen, adding the verbiage along Mitchell Hammock as set forth in the city land development codes on page thirty, page five, sorry, number eight, after the word type B landscape buffer.
Is that right, David?
Yeah, type B landscape buffer yard.
Mr. Cobb, did Councilman Schenk get it right?
Let's see here.
After the word requirements, it should say as set forth.
Actually, I believe, I believe that it, here's the way I believe the sentence, this is the way the sentence should read.
Let's hear it.
"Notwithstanding anything herein to the contrary, the city and the owner agree that the property shall be subject to the type B landscaped buffer yard along Mitchell Hammock Road as set forth in the city's land development code."
That's the verbiage.
But you delete the word requirement?
We would delete the word requirements, yes.
Is that your motion, Councilman Schenk, with the verbiage as read by Mr. Cobb?
Correct.
And your motion was to adopt?
Correct.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, Councilman Schenk, anything?
No, I like the entrance sign. I, I saw that, and it really, now we've been, we always look at it. I saw that, and it really, now we've been, we always look at the bridge and kind of wish they were something, and that just really makes a nice, big presence. Thank you.
Councilman Hankin?
I was just going to say the same thing. I agree. I like the idea you guys put some Oviedo stuff in there. It's the first thing you're going to see when you're coming in, so look forward to it. Good job.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Councilman, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you.
I think the building has a mansa roof on it, everything, right? I remember? Yeah, this will be, this will be fancy and not blue like the one at Sea World, right? Copper colored? All right. Anything else? Mr. Cobb, anything? Mr. Colbert, we're good? Aplicants comfortable with the motion? All righty. Motion on table is to adopt as amended with the verbiage provided by Mr. Cobb. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go build a great project, guys.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Again. All righty, moving on. Discussion items, we have none. Mr. Cobb, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one item tonight.
You know, no report's the appropriate response.
I know that, but I wanted, this is something very important.
Oh, okay.
I wanted to give you an update on our initiative to obtain state funding for the amphitheater. Our request has been making its way through the various committees of the House and Senate, and I'm happy to report that we are still standing. Our request has diminished quite a bit. We are no longer at 1.5 million. Our request is now $400,000. That is what our Senator Simmons and Representative Broder feel that they can be successful with getting for us. Mr. Boweare and Ms. Hayes and I spent the weekend preparing the forms to be submitted to the governor, and those forms were submitted today. They had to be submitted at 10 o'clock. We shipped them up to the lobbyist at 9:30, 9:45, somewhere around in that timeframe.
Nothing like cutting it just a little close.
Yeah. Well, had we?
What's the matter? You had to kick off at 9:30 last night? Is that it?
That was pretty much it. The governor's office decided not to tell anybody about this until like Friday, so.
That email came at like 7 o'clock on Friday.
It was, yeah, it was very late. But we were able to put it together. We think we put together a quality, a quality response for the governor to review, and even Mr. Kamati was very satisfied with it and sent us an email, said, "Already sent it off, it's gone." So I just wanted to get you updated on where we are, and hopefully the governor will be gracious to us this year.
Anything else, Mr. Cobb?
That's it, Mayor.
As Councilman Schenk just blew up as big as his screen would go. Mr. Colbert, any report from the city attorney's office?
Nothing.
Because I always miss Mr. Grue. No report?
No, nothing to bring to you.
All righty. Well, let's see, our reports, I do not have a report this evening. Councilman Schenk?
I just want to say to Drew, you know, it's great seeing everybody in the park, hey, and our fire department in the park today, but, you know, I go there at 9, walking around, or, you know, at 9:00, 7:00 something, and there is someone there cleaning up, doing stuff. So it's great, the care, and also the chief. There's a Seminole County police, Seminole County Sheriff's deputy that lives a couple houses down, and his comment was, "It's fantastic to see the police presence in Oviedo on the park." You know, it's just such a great thing to see and know that it'll help keep the park in the shape it is. So just passing that along.
Anything else, Councilman? Councilman Hankin?
Not tonight.
Oh, yeah, you're still on a cruise, that's why. Deputy Mayor Drago?
All right.
All righty, good. Councilmember Britton?
No, no, no. No.
You said "all right."
No, no. I attended the Ending Homelessness, a shared vision for our community.
Thank you for covering that.
For you, Mr. Mayor. And it was actually very enlightening.
I get lots of emails like that. Would you like more of them?
Sure.
You got it.
Anyway, it was put on, there were a lot of people from different cities there, few mayors, few commissioners. Bob Delary and Glenn Castle from the Community Based Care of Central Florida, Beth Devolos from Families in Transition, sat up on a panel and talked about the homeless situation in Seminole County. And we, we're a very lucky county. We're very fortunate, but we do have a lot of homeless people. And they talked about the two separate issues of homelessness, where you have the families that maybe one of them lost their job, there was an illness in the family, so the families are displaced temporarily. So, you know, they have to live in a one-room motel room, which is not a home, so they're trying to work on that. And then you have the chronic homelessness. A lot of them are mentally ill, so that's a different issue. So they're trying to get together, and they want to bring the cities in to this initiative and see what we can do to help address the homelessness issue in our area. I know that Chief Chudnow gets lots of emails about this person's panhandling here, you know, he's in our city, but it helps to keep in mind that they are homeless, most of them are homeless, homeless people, most of them are mentally ill, so they need a lot of help. So I think, I'm not real sure, Brenda Carey, the chair of the county commission, she is spearheading this. So I'm not sure what kind of involvement she wants from the city. So I brought this, I thought I would give it to Brian, and maybe he could.
Are they going to keep us like in an email loop?
They were.
Since you attended, they're probably.
Yes, yes, they are. Yes, they are. But it was actually very good, and it was well-attended.
Well, thank you for covering.
Yeah, I had a lot of good information. And the sad part is, there's still probably 1,500 children that are homeless in our county. And so they're, they really want to help those kids. So I think it was, it was a good seminar. Thank you for asking me to go for you. I just want to thank Bobby, Bobby Wyatt. If you've driven past 426 and South Lake Jessup, that big, ugly, blue pump is gone. Well, it's not gone, but it's moved.
It's moved back.
Yeah, it's moved back, it's moved backwards, kind of behind the trees, it's a little, makes it look a little bit nicer. I had a couple comments tonight about it, how much nicer it looks, and the trees that were planted around. So Bobby, you really made a lot of people happy in that part of town. Speaking of that part of town, have you seen the new townhouse?
What's that?
Have you seen the new townhouse?
Restaurant, it's kind of out of the ground.
The restaurant? Yep, it's out of the ground. It's big, it's really coming along nicely.
Yeah, and it's having a good time with it.
Yep, they are. So I think that's all I have for tonight.
Councilman Britton?
Real quick.
Who shot the two-over bar the other day?
Yeah, regulation, too.
Good for you.
Chief, welcome to Duke. We had a Oviedo Police Foundation golf tournament last Friday, and I don't know how much money they raised, but I know it was all going to the purchase of the dog and the training, so hats off to the foundation. Tell them thanks. And the only other thing I had was, we did receive, did you all receive the report from John Jones on the development review process? I got it last week, but I asked for an update, he sent it to me.
All right, so I don't know if we got it.
Okay.
Did anybody else get any? No, I don't remember.
I've got it. I think it looks pretty good. I won't say anything about it. I'll let you guys get the official version. I just had probed John to see what the results was. I think he must have sent me a draft of it, but it looks pretty good, I think.
Great.
It's got a lot of good information and a lot of suggested improvements that I think we're already making, so.
Would you mind, is it appropriate that Councilman Britton forward it out to us, or should he send it to the clerk first?
Actually, it went to, did it go to you, Teresa?
I'll tell you what, we don't have to come up. Whoever has it, send it out to the other four. How about that?
Okay, anyway, it's good report, and that's all I got.
Excellent.
I just, I'm going to piggyback, TJ's this week for the foundation.
Right, yes.
If you, you know, if you get a TJ's this week, just mark on your receipt and stuff, and they'll donate 10% to the police foundation.
So Debra, we see you over there three times this week.
Exactly.
Just write "police foundation" on top, and 10% of your ticket goes to.
Just write "OPF," you're packing it, exactly.
Anything else? Any other business before us? All righty, future meeting dates. We have Monday, June 22, 5:30 PM work session on the budget, and Ms. Hayes, we heard that that might be a little bit abbreviated. Is that true, not true? The reason why I'm asking is we would, we have to reconvene our RFP panel.
It's a little shorter than the March 30th, so that was kind of my intent. I think maybe about an hour, but it's up to you as to the content.